Good evening. It's 7:05. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Special meeting, Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, September 19th, 2024, at 7:05 PM. First item on the agenda is a roll call.
Okay, we have Chair Lester.
Here.
Commissioner Millet? Commissioner James?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Blint?
Present.
Commissioner Goff?
Here.
Commissioner Ola?
Present.
Commissioner Bolton? Absent. Commissioner? Yep, Kevin Hussein, absent. And Leon Peters. Commissioner Leon Peters, absent.
Commercial meeting.
Okay. And Commissioner Marshawn Lee Lee, absent. We have a quorum.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, I want to move to item 3B. And that is 580 Cottage Grove Road, request for a five-year extension for a previously-approved pre-subdivision and a special permit/flood management permit and related site plan for the construction of two 20-unit multifamily buildings and a 48,770 square-feet office building with related site work. Applicant Peter R. DeMalle, on behalf of Corporate Crossing Limited Partnership.
Thank you, Chairman Lester. Peter DeMalle, President and CEO of Design Professionals, was offices at 21 Jeffrey Drive in South Windsor, although will be at 58 Connecticut Avenue, Suite H, starting next Wednesday. Just wanted to let you know. Same zip code. But it's been a pleasure representing Corporate Crossing throughout this process. Wetlands, TPZ, all the other entities involved with this, the staff have been terrific. I'm here on behalf of our clients who are requesting an extension, five-year extension of the permits that you previously granted, special exception floodplain, re-subdivision, and this related site plan that's on your agenda. So we're requesting a five-year extension. That was, we normally wouldn't do it this early in the process because you have five years before you have to ask for another five years. But there's a prospective buyer-developer of it, part or all of the project, and they've requested that we do this before we get further along in the final negotiations. But they've been involved for quite many months, and they're looking into all aspects of the project. And there's one thing they want to check off, that you've granted this extension so they can be comfortable that it's in place for quite a while, even though if they move forward, I'm sure they'll go much faster than that, but they just want to have the comfort factor. The TPZ will grant it.
Great. Thank you. Jonathan?
Staff has no objection to this. We understand that it's basically, we consider it a financing requirement in terms of the prospective purchaser wanted assurances sooner than later that the extension would be granted. We have no objection to the extension being granted, and we're hopeful that they will pursue the development. But we would recommend that the commission approve the extension as originally approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
I do. I've got to figure out how to put my hand up.
That's okay. I'll recognize you, Commissioner Goff.
I'm on my tablet, which I'm not as used to. Yeah, no, I thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for this a little clunky. I will figure this out in a minute. I guess my question is basically, I was not on the commission when this was approved, and I'm not going to question, you know, the approval of what was approved. I guess my question, though, to the representative for Corporate Crossing, is what has changed? I mean, when they pursued this and asked for these permits, I would assume they were planning on pursuing this development. Now, is this financing, or you're selling it to another developer? I'd just like more information about what's unfolding here. Because I don't think the precedent of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, when someone comes in with an application, is to sell options for people to, you know, pass around on the trading market. And I'm not saying that's what's happening. I'd just like more information on exactly what's transpiring here. Thank you.
Yeah. Incidentally, I'd be glad to address that, but Kelly Karen is here from the entity, the applicant, from Corporate Crossing. So Corporate Crossing has owned this property, it's just under 20 acres, for many, many, many years. They've successfully owned and leased out pretty much full capacity, as I understand it, primarily to medical tenants, because there's a growing medical community, lot buildings on Cottage Grove Road in this immediate area. There's a demand for it, and there's more and more of that development of late. So they've owned it successfully, but they are looking for a change in terms of ownership. They wanted to pursue this development, so see if we could, they retained our firm to see if we could expand the medical office campus. And so we determined with Charles Nyberg, an architect, and others, Jim McManus and other professionals at Fussin' O'Neill for Traffic, that we could meet the regulations, although it was a long process, we could meet the regulations and expand to include an additional three-story, just under 50,000 square-foot primarily medical office building, to support the growing medical campus area on Cottage Grove Road, consistent with your plan of conservation development and your zoning regulations. We then went through a process to get approval for the 40 units of multifamily development, again, consistent with your plan of conservation development. And there are other, in fact, there was another development right next door. It was much larger, it was built recently.
Jolly Drive.
Yeah, at the end of Jolly Drive, right. I guess that'd be the west end of it. And it's been very successful, these developments in Bloomfield, and the demand for housing, of course, is off the charts right now nationwide. So they asked us to also look at what else they could do with the property, and we looked at the southerly part of the property, abutting in that big field where the ice cream stand is, at the far end of it, that general area in the woods, and determined it might be a beautiful location for a multifamily, again, consistent with your plan of conservation development. You want to have that along Cottage Grove Road, right down the street from Cigna and other major enterprises, where it'd be convenient for their employees to reside, and also convenient for people employed in Hartford and other places. So we did that. We didn't think it would take this long for them, and they had every intention of not doing the development themselves. They're at the age in life where they're thinking about slowing down, I think that's safe to say. William Browker and Buck Carlton, and they wanted to be able to move this along and create something that was special there, consistent with what the town objectives were, the goals and objectives for the plan of conservation development, and that's what we pursued. So we get that approved. But we had also COVID. We started in 2020 with our first applications. We got a zoning text amendment. We got a couple of zone changes to allow for the multifamily, among other approvals, and it was a long process. And then we were in COVID, and things did slow down. So we're now, we've come out of that, and there is an interested party, and others have looked at it. Some have not rejected it even, have looked at it, other parties, but it looks like we're a very serious developer who is, by the way, local. I'm not liberty to tell you who they are right now. We're not supposed to do that now, but someone who's a developer of high regard, repute in this area. I knew of him before Kelly told me who he was. And he's active in the community, does things of a public, on a public posture, does things for the community. If I told you exactly what it was, you'd probably figure out who the guy is. But he's a good guy, and he does a lot and gives back to metro Hartford area. So that's why we're moving along. Buck and William really do want to move this along and put it in the hands of some younger people to go ahead with the development. They're not on a stage in their life where they're interested in doing that right now, although they've done a lot themselves over the years. But they need to wrap it up as they go on with their lives.
Commissioner Goff, are you all set with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Oh, Katie. Commissioner Blint?
Thank you, Chair. The only question I had was, are these plans for multifamily housing only considering the back part of the property, or would there be visible frontage that we would see? Sorry, not multifamily, but yeah, two 20-unit multifamily buildings. Would you be able to see them from the road?
I would expect you to be able to see the front building, the first one. I believe that's a three-story building. It's 20 units. I think it's perpendicular to the road, so the end of it, you could see, once there's some clearing in that immediate area. So I'd say, yeah, from parts of the Cottage Grove Road, you could see the southerly end in particular of that building. I don't suspect you'd be seeing the northerly one. There are trees, still plenty of trees are going to be remaining on the property. Between the office development and this development, and then even to the west of it, or pardon me, to the south of it, to the left side, as you're facing from Cottage Grove Road. So, yeah, will you be able to see it? Yes, you would. I'm not going to say you wouldn't. But you're primarily going to be seeing the end of the building, which is the smallest part of the building. It faces toward the medical buildings, to the north. Actually, excuse me, to the east.
I guess I'll just...
We have the plan, if you want us to share the screen.
Yeah, I'd like to see the plan. I feel like I'm flying a little bit blind here.
Linda's going to put it up.
And sensitive area, you know?
Yeah. And we have a robust landscape architectural plan as well, and I think Charlie Nyberg did a really good job. I've worked with him on other residential and commercial developments. He used to have his own firm, now he's with Sell Now Firm, and he's a talented architect. I think he did a really good job, and the plan is appropriate. Most, a very high percentage of the property is being preserved. Oh, thank you.
Great.
Try and stay at the mic as well.
The mic is where?
Right there. You've got to sort of run the podium.
Oh, okay. So this part right here is the southerly building, the entrance to the residential portion. It'll have its own entrance from Cottage Grove Road. And to the left side of that, as you enter, will be the initial 20-story, 20-unit building. And then you go to, the driveway swings to the left, and then you go to the other building way in the back, which is the second 20-unit building. And then over to the right side, because we're asking for permission for the overall site plan, to the right side is the new building that, yeah, the cursor's on that. For the, there's one in the front, and there'll be one in the back. And there, Mr. Nyberg had similar materials. He wanted to be like tandem buildings, so the exterior would be very similar to what we had before. It's just it's three stories versus a front building closest to Cottage Grove Road is a two-story building. And he showed illustrations of that to the commission when we made our presentations. So those buildings will look like they, you know, they look like they're both in tandem. And so that's done, so that'll be farther back. But there is a first building in the front left of the entire frontage, and that will be observed. The southerly part, I think the north is up to the top, southerly part is facing, the tail end of the building is facing toward Cottage Grove Road. There is a tree line along the common property line, and then there's in between our road entrance for the multifamily residential development and the existing entrance, which will serve the new office building to the rear, there is a wooded area with substantial trees in between. So as you're going westbound on Cottage Grove Road coming from Copaco, that'll, those trees, existing trees, many have matured, will block a lot of view of the building. But as you get closer to it, you'll see the southerly building, the first one, and then you should be able to see, going eastbound, you should be able to see that building as well. But there will be some trees in the way.
Great. I would expect there to be an excellent landscape plan. Thank you.
Our landscape architects did that, and I believe they did a very fine job.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
Mr. Goff, yeah, for me.
Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm curious, maybe this is a question for our planning department, but what happens if we do not grant the extension?
But it doesn't expire, actually, for another year and a number of months. The impact would be on the applicant and their moving forward in terms of their potential transfer of the property to a new owner. The approval will remain in place, permits remain in place for another year, almost a year and a half, but they had asked to expedite the extension so that they could consummate the agreement with the potential buyer. It's really a request of the buyer that's driving this, and quite frankly, Commissioner, I'm not sure that anything is gained by not approving the extension.
I guess I'm curious if it's, so like, in the event it's not approved, the buyer or whoever is trying to use the permits would have to begin building within the next year and a half, or they'd have to reapply for these permits or the approved site plan?
Yes, they'd have to start their construction before the permits expire.
Okay, that's my only question.
Commissioner Goff?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to follow up on a little bit of Commissioner James' question, and then I want to also ask one question, sort of related to what Commissioner Blint pointed out. Since the approval was granted in, it sounds, I'd have to work backwards, roughly 2020, 2019.
2021, yeah.
2021, thank you. We have changed the regulations slightly, especially the new regulation with respect to trees and mature trees and replacement of trees. If the commission grants an extension for five years, which regulations apply? The regulations they were originally approved under, or any regulations that have been put in place since then? Can we approve this with, and you know, there's also the issue of multi-use paths in front of buildings that we passed in January this year. Can we, if, do those apply? If they don't apply, can we grant the extension with, you know, with the condition that it satisfies all the current regulations? Let me ask that, and I have a second question.
Commissioner, the approval runs with the regulations that were in place when the approval was granted. And we cannot impose regulations that were not in effect at the time of approval subsequently.
Let me ask you, could we ask the applicant if he would be willing to adhere to any other, any newer regulations? I believe it involves tree cutting or tree replacement.
Let me just tell you, my experience with this particular statute, having been a director planning multiple communities myself, and been in the field, I've had this business for 38 years, we do, we've done hundreds and hundreds of developments. It's a routine request. The statutes allow for the applicant to simply request a five-year extension, and it's routinely granted. I've never seen it not granted if somebody wants to do that. And it does free, Mr. Coleman is correct, it does freeze the regulations who are effective at the time. So that, for example, the gentleman who's looking at it, seriously looking at to develop it right now, he knows what the regulations are, what the approval was, and he can look at his costs and everything he has to do. The idea behind the statute was to, people know that they can rely on the approval governing, governed by the regulations, and this is approved under those regulations, so they can continue to do that. Five years and up to a five-year extension, unless they actually gave a little bit more, I've heard that of late. But it's always been a five-year period and then a five-year extension. All you'd simply have to do is request it, a little letter, and it's routinely granted. I've never seen anything happen other than that in my, I've been in this business 10 years in government and 38 years in private sector, and I've never seen anything happen, but it's a routine approval under the statute, and all the regulations have frozen. It doesn't mean that the new developer, if the town staff asks them to do some changes and stuff, if the commission does, they want to have a good relationship. I'm sure they'd be amenable to talking about it, but they're not required to do changes.
Right.
But, you know.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, and I just would like to, you know, to say for the record that Mr. DeMille is probably one of the most informed land use folks in the state of Connecticut, and so he is very knowledgeable and knows for what he speaks.
No, I agree with him. I assumed it was just a straightforward approval also, but we do want to get some questions from the commission. Commissioner Goff, did you have any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to get one piece of clarification, seeing the site plan, and I, as I said, this has been approved. I don't think that, the site plan looks good to me. I do think the tree issue, it's likely not going to be a big issue based on what they're showing in the plan, but I do think we should, you know, I would like the applicant to address that, because the question he answered was not the question you asked, Mr. Chair. The other thing, though, I would like to make very clear here, you mentioned the property to the west, the two properties, the ice cream property and the property next to it, and those are, you know, I think Commissioner Blint made a comment that those are, you know, very sensitive areas. They're some of our few last remaining farmland. Your view, this does not impact on those properties at all. That's correct, isn't it?
Yeah, we're not having, we're not doing anything to impact those properties. You will be able to see, as you're traveling on Cottage Grove Road, and that means if you were in the field, you'd be able to see the apartment, at least the southerly apartment building, and if you're in the field, you'd probably be able to see the northerly one as well, because one was three stories and the other one's four stories, as approved by the commission. But again, when we started this process, we met with then-town planner Jose Guiner, Peter Castaldi and others. We went through a long discussion about, does this make sense from the town's perspective? And the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation development reiterated two things. That was that, one, we want, the town of Bloomfield wants multifamily development along Cottage Grove Road, to support the businesses along there and to meet the housing needs of the community. That was number one. Number two, the plan of conservation development wanted to have the growing office developments along there, including the medical offices, to be reinforced through new development. And you've approved many medical offices that I've seen over the last 10 years in that immediate area, and to my knowledge, they're all full. And it's a growing medical community there. And Kelly, you're all full now? Yeah, they're all full right now, and that's a good-sized building. So there's, the need for it is great, both housing and primarily medical offices for the offices. I think the health department was even in there, weren't they? Yeah. Yeah. Are they still in there?
Maybe over there. Yeah.
Yeah, your health department's in there. But it's primarily medical, and the demand is great. Unlike downtown Hartford, the office towers, unfortunately, the demand isn't as great. But medical, suburban medical campuses are very strong, and it's just what the town indicated they wanted. We wouldn't have pursued it unless it was consistent with your plan of conservation development, and it was supported by town staff and the commissions as we went along the way. So that's why we pursued it. We wouldn't have pursued it without that.
Right. Thank you. There's no further questions. We'll just take any quick comments. Any comments from any of the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. At this time, the commission will entertain a motion on this.
I'll move to approve the request for a five-year extension for the previously-approved re-subdivision and a special permit/flood management permit and related site plan for the construction of two 20-unit multifamily buildings and a 48,770 square-foot office building with related site work. Applicant Peter R. DeMalle, on behalf of Corporate Crossing Limited Partnership for 580 Cottage Grove Road.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, and the chair votes aye. Motion carries.
And thank you very much. And I very much, personally, I've been involved with this project intimately since its inception, developing the concepts and working with your town staff. Town staff were great, just fantastic. You've got some of the best town staff around. And I've worked with John Coleman previously in another life, and he's a great guy. So I look forward to this, and I hopeful, hopefully that my company can also continue with this project with a new developer to bring it to a successful conclusion. And I hope it happens, and it's consistent with what the town has expressed that they want.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we do wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 3A, commission discussion only, draft text amendments related to cannabis-related uses and PEC residential uses. Jonathan, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, in the package we handed out today, I think we'll have to distribute it electronically to those who are joining us virtually today, which we will do tomorrow. We have prepared, at the commission's request, some draft text amendments related to cannabis. My suggestion is that you receive it today, you digest them, we can begin the conversation at the next meeting. They're fairly straightforward. We have basically limited significantly, A, where they can be located, how they can be relocated next to each other. Linda did the preparation, and if you want a brief overview, I think she'd be happy to give that to you. But as you know, the moratorium expires that we passed on November 1. There's nothing to present, prevent, I'll get the word out, the commission from extending that moratorium if they want to have extended conversations on the, on the... on the, on the draft text amendments. So don't feel any time pressure to, to get them through. But, and we have not had, as far as I know, anyone walk in the door asking for a retail establishment or, or another. We've also, I've also discovered that there are a myriad of different cannabis permits, and we've tried to cover all those, from, from growing to retail to transportation to storage. There's just all different types of permits, and we've tried to make sure we've covered all of those. Be happy to answer any questions, although I would suspect that there'll be more after you've reviewed it.
Okay, well, the ones online haven't seen it yet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioner Goff?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the planner, just one, as, as a real basic overview, and I look forward to looking at the details and the work you guys have done. I think one of the things we also talked about when we put the moratorium in place was ultimately limiting the number of cultivation and retail, those two basic ones. There may be others in terms of transportation or whatever. But in terms of cultivation, we already have permitted two. And in terms of retail, I think there was a general consensus among the commission that while we all agreed that we needed to change the regulations to make it possible to have one in the town, we also thought, given the size of Bloomfield, that one was probably the right number, although, you know, that's an open item for discussion. Is that included in the proposed, is, is some limitation included in the proposed text amendments to the regulation?
Absolutely. When all is said and done, probably be a maximum of two of each at this point. That, the way the regulations have, you could stretch to get two retail, but it'd be a stretch, and, and cultivation is limited to two.
Thank you.
We already have that.
Here we are.
Right, and we're there now, and we're there now.
Any further questions by any commission regarding this?
Yes, this is, can you hear me, please? Hello?
Yes, Commissioner Ola.
Yes. I wonder if this issue of cannabis is not, could not be a candidate for a town-wide referendum in which the townspeople get to vote, or whether or not that is taking place because of the sensitivity of your field.
That would be a decision for the town council. I have had conversations with members of the council through the, through the mayor's committee, and they are, and I gave them an indication of where we were headed, and they are, they indicated that at this point they were comfortable with, you know, with allowing cannabis, but on a very limited basis in, in limited locations. If we were to do a townwide referendum, that would have to be a decision by the town council.
Okay, so that's an issue that will have to be raised before the council then?
And I assume that that wouldn't affect their current cultivators, facilities that's in place now?
That's correct.
So where does the, the commission get guidance for regulate, for the regulation that is being considered now? Where did that originate from? What kind of guidance?
Well, we're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna distribute to you, Commissioner, proposed regulations relating to cannabis in town, and that, those regulations would provide the guidance. And then you all can consider that and decide whether or not you're comfortable with those regulations or you would suggest changes. Right now, we have a moratorium so that nothing further can happen than what already exists in town. But we do know that there may be some interest in, in a retail establishment coming into town, and we've prepared regulations that would permit that under some fairly specific conditions and in specific locations. It is, it is, it is for the commission to decide whether or not they wish to adopt those regulations to allow it. You also can maintain the moratorium or basically remove cannabis from the regulations as a permitted use. That would make the existing cultivators technically non-conforming, but would not impact their ability to continue what they're doing, but would impact their ability to expand.
Jonathan, isn't there current state guidelines right now regarding cannabis?
There are state guidelines in terms of the state permits and, and requirements that any operator has to follow. They do not supersede a town's land use requirements, though, and zoning requirements. They refer, the town, the state requirements refer more to the, to the qualifications of the operator, the financial, you know, financial backing of the operator, and, you know, and all the background checks that they do.
Gotcha, thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Mallett?
Just a reminder on when the moratorium expires. I didn't catch that, I forgot.
Thank you.
November 1.
November 1, okay, thank you. That was my other question.
Just to follow up that question, you went over some dates. Can you repeat that? Or some timeline?
The timeline is really up to you all now. We're distributed to you. We can bring it up at the, at the next meeting, you can start your conversation. You basically have, if you move to, to approve the regulations at your October meeting, we would have to extend the moratorium for a month to allow for the proper publication and public hearing that would have to take place. But the timeline is really yours to determine. There's no, we're not being pressured by, by an applicant or any outside pressures other than we have this moratorium and, and we either need to agree to extend it, which we can, or we move on these adopted regulations.
Thank you, and just for clarification, and just to Commissioner Aina's point, we would discuss kind of the proposed regulations you've drafted here. I'm assuming that they'd be posted somewhere for the public to be able to review as well?
There would be, and you would also hold a public hearing on them.
And then a public hearing would happen where we could have feedback on, you know, what
Yes.
the general public.
Correct.
Okay. And that comes after our discussion that we?
After you decide that you're comfortable with what, what you're putting out there for the public to review.
Okay, so just theoretically, we, we have this. Everybody on the commission gets a copy, we review and discuss in October. Then if we decide that we're comfortable at that point, then there is a scheduling of a public forum for feedback.
A public hearing, you'd hold a public hearing. It would be advertised, you know, and noticed.
And, and then we hear from the public, we make any updates and changes, and then theoretically it's approved, and then there's, I'm just thinking like timeline, there's some time period for them to be published, you said?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Question?
Nope. Yes, Commissioner Ola?
Yes. I'm wondering whether or not we could just go ahead and extend the moratorium now instead of waiting, because we have one meeting in October, and at that point, and it's already towards the end of the month, it's going to be towards the end of the month anyway, why don't we go ahead and extend the moratorium now? And then so that we have time to really do the work on the next stage?
You couldn't do it at this meeting, because this is a special meeting, and that item technically is not on the agenda, and you can't add an item to a special meeting. If the commission so desires, we can put it on the agenda for your regular meeting next week, or you can do it at your October meeting. If that is a desire of the commission, we can certainly put it on the agenda for discussion and action if the commission so chooses. And we would probably recommend at a minimum a three-month extension, if not a six-month extension.
Commissioner Goff?
Yes, and I, I just, I want to go back, I want to go to the last thing the planner said for you, Mr. Chair. What is the planner's recommendation? Because from what I'm hearing, I think we're, with what we are going to receive, we probably will be ready to take action, but because of the length of time with the public hearing, getting public input, making any changes, it does sound like we're not going to get that done before the moratorium runs out. So is, is the, does the planner recommend that we extend the moratorium for a short period of time to get, to make sure this all gets done? I, I'd like to hear the planner's recommendation.
We'd be comfortable with that, and I would, you know, I would recommend a three-month so that we don't drag it out too long, and we can certainly put it on the agenda for the next meeting and, and notice it, and, and adopt, and just extend the moratorium. And we will do that, and the commission can make the decision that it wishes to make. But we'll put it on the agenda for the, for the regular meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussions or comments regarding it? Okay, I think we're satisfied that we'll, we'll deal with this at our next meeting.
A question, please. Have we resolved that the matter of whether or not to extend the moratorium would be on the next month's agenda, or the next meeting's agenda?
We will put it on the agenda for next week.
Next week, okay.
The regular September meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, the second part of that is the PEC residential usage?
The PLR and the?
Well, you only list the PEC, but I, I assume it could include the PLR also.
We did not prepare that, the staff. We got the cannabis done, we didn't, we did not get the PEC. And I think that you may want to have a, we can make the technical recommendations, but my, my inclination, Mr. Chair, is that there are some commissioners, I believe, that might want to have a conversation as to whether or not you want to maintain the PEC regulations in their entirety. And we probably want to have that, you probably want to have that conversation before we get into any technical amendments to it. And?
Well, I guess my question would be, if the PEC regulations were removed, then what would we use to go by? Would that mean that there would be no more PEC development?
As conceived under those regulations, that would be, that would be the case, that's correct.
I'm not sure, okay, I mean, I, I guess that's for further discussion, but I'm not sure why we would want to eliminate the ability to develop.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I think, but we've had indications that there are commissioners that would like to discuss that, which I think is certainly their, their right, and it would then be, obviously, Mr. Chair, up to the decision of the full commission as to whether or not they wanted to follow that route or not.
So that basically would eliminate any further elderly development complexes?
Not necessarily. I mean, you can have elderly concerts under the PLR and whatnot, and multi-family, they don't restrict it. There would not be regulations that are specifically tailored to what the PEC allows, which is the housing with the medical and other support facilities included in the development.
Right, so would that just be considered text amendments to remove?
Yes, that would be a text amendment.
Some of the stipulations is currently in there? Is, is that what the request might be? I mean, I'm just curious, because this is the first I've heard.
I have not had a detailed discussion with, with any member of the commission on that, so I can't adequately answer that question for you as to whether or not we would remove sections or we would, we would even remove the entire section.
Yes, Commissioner Mallett?
So I remember from prior conversations, it, it does seem new to potentially remove the entire PEC. I think shoring up and more defining the types of units, whether they were, you know, single, duplex, multifamily, attached or detached. I believe that was the biggest thing that we wanted to clarify versus, removing is definitely new to me. I mean, it's certainly an option, but not where I was thinking we were going. I think it was more a clarification on number of units per building, attached, detached.
You're absolutely correct. That's the conversation that's been held around the commission.
Right, okay.
I'm only indicating to you that I, that I have been approached on the broader.
Okay.
And, and that we certainly can get.
From my perspective, the, how I described, which is what I thought we were, we were going to maybe lay out.
We can do that.
And make it consistent.
Right.
Where there was any possible.
Gray areas.
Yeah, gray areas between, you know, where it might be described and other places as far as.
Some staff owes, staff owes you that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner James?
Just a comment to that. I shared the town attorney's notes on the PLR, on what constitutes multifamily. So I, I believe if we're discussing the PEC, any technical changes to that, we should have a conversation about any technical changes to the PLR and how we have been approving those, how we have been thinking about what qualifies under that zoning change and what doesn't.
Well, that's exactly what I thought we were going to be discussing, is getting that consistent.
Staff will prepare for both, will provide you information on both.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, then the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we may not have it ready for the, for the meeting on next, next week.
Okay.
But we'll definitely have it ready for the following.
October. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we'll go to old business, and we'll discuss the draft of the PLCD for further discussion, and then determine when we'd like to get the, the final draft up, up and out to the public. Jonathan, you want to comment on that for us?
Mr. Chairman, I have received comments from a number of the members of the commission. The staff's pushes that we would, we basically would suggest that we, that if the commission is comfortable that we, that we work with the, with the consultant to begin the 65-day review period. I believe that the commission needs to take formal action, and we would, and we, we can't put it on, on today's meeting, because again, we can't amend the agenda, we would put it on for the meeting next Thursday.
Okay.
And start that and that, and get it out to the public so that hopefully we can, you know, adopt the, by the end of the calendar year or shortly thereafter and, and have the new. We can, we can ask, we can, seems to me there are basically two choices. Many of you have submitted both minor and some significant recommendations. We have passed them all on to the, to the, to the consultant. We can either take the draft, that last draft that we had, and put that out and incorporate all of the amendments that are not there in the 65-day period as well as any comments that we've, commission finds acceptable during, that come in from the public and other boards. Or we can ask the consultant to revise the draft that we have at this point and then send it out. My concern is that we, that we don't, we don't drag, in, in layman's terms, drag it out too much longer, that we, that we get on with it, and I know we, it's, it's our document or it's your document, so we need to be comfortable with it. We can either, we can be fully comfortable with it before we send it out, or we can be, we can achieve our comfort level while the 65-day period is, is in place. And I would defer to whatever the commission wishes to do on that.
Okay, thank you.
The only other, I have one other, one other thing. I would do this under the, so that I'm not violating the, the agenda requirements. There has, there, there is a, a need to, to, under the housing component. uh, discuss inclusionary zoning. And, and whether we, and how we want to incorporate that first in the POCD and then as appropriate in our zoning regulations. The Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted about 14 months ago by the commission has a Affordable Housing Strategy on pages 23 through, I think, 28, which I have made copies of, and also lays out, um, the, the method, the potential method of amending the zoning regulations to require, um, a percentage set aside in any development that you approve, if you so require it, for affordable housing. And I have checked, um, as I told you, Mr. Chairman, I would look, the commission can require it. It does not have to be a request. If we put in our zoning regulations, we can require that 10% of a housing development or 20% of a housing development, um, be, include, um, affordable housing. And that obviously is a decision that's up to the commission. And, um, and what, and what impact that would have on developers, um, in today's world, is it, there's obviously a big demand for all housing, whether we require it or request it, or whether we put it in a negotiation. But we can be fairly firm on, um, on having developers included in projects that we approve.
Uh, yeah, like, uh, one question. John, do you know if there's any other towns or cities statewide just requiring it? Or could we get a list of who, who is requiring it?
We, we certainly can do that research and we will. I cannot give you a definitive answer at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goff and then Commissioner Aina, did you?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just in answer to that last question, I do believe that Simsbury requires it now. Um, so that may be the first place that the planner would want to take a look. I, I do believe they require it now in their zoning regulations. So that's something to, to take a look at. Uh, I guess I have two questions, one just very technical. You mentioned pages 24 through 28. Is that, that's in our Affordable Housing Plan, not in the current plan? And you're, you're talking about incorporating that?
Do they have copies of that, John?
It's, it's in the Affordable Housing Plan.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to know where to find it. Yeah, okay. Um, so that's, those, those are the pages you're referring to. Um, I guess my big question at this point, I'm glad you've gotten quite a bit of feedback. I do think there's a lot of, there are a lot of people in the public that have wanted to see this for a long time. I think we'll get lots of comments. I think that's a good thing and that could be very valuable in revising the plan at this point. Because, you know, frankly, I could not vote for, uh, you know, approving this as our plan of conservation development. But I, I do, you know, I guess my question, and again, this is to the planner because you've worked more with the consultant, what are your expectations for them to be able to take the commission comments, hold those in their hand, put this out to the public, get public comments, and then come back with a revision that will incorporate that, that the, that the, that the commission will be happy with and hopefully the public will be happy with, and still have to go through the council? Versus asking them to take the commission comments, some of which involve quite a bit of extra, you know, sections, like you're talking about the Affordable Housing section. And I know myself, I, I put in, you know, probably 10, 12 sections that need to be in plan of conservation development. As opposed to they're doing that first and getting us back a product that could go out, that we, that we hopefully would be happier with, that we go out to the, um, to the public as something more representative, hopefully of this commission. What should, you know, I, I guess I'm asking more, what is your feeling of what the response we're going to get and, and how we're going to get to a final product that will be easiest with the consultant?
My sense, Commissioner, is that, um, the less revisions they have, the less times they have to make revisions, the less pushback we're going to get. Uh, I suspect we're going to get some pushback either way, uh, which I will deal with. My sense is that the majority of the, of the, um, comments and revisions will come from the commission. I would not, if, if we get the plan to incorporate all of the items that, um, that you all have said, and we can get it to our satisfaction, my gut tells me that we will not get significant revisions from the public. We may get some, we may get some specific limited items. And I may be dead wrong, but that's, that's what, so you know, it's, you know, it's sort of the pay me now or pay me later. And, um, my lean would be to try and, I, I think it'll take a little more time. Uh, but my lean would be to try, is to work with them to get the commission in the, you know, in the next two to three weeks, get a document that you all are comfortable with and can stand behind and then send it out. As opposed to sending a document out now that you have issues with, that you may hear the same issues, um, from the public. I would be more comfortable with a document that the majority of the commission fully supports.
Right.
Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to have that conversation with the consultant. I suspect it'll be, um, an interesting conversation.
Thank you. I, I would support that. I think that's the proper way to go. And I think we'll get less, I do think we will get a lot less comments from the public if we make some changes now than if we try to put this document out. I think if, you know, the, the second draft is better, but it still has a lot missing and a lot of flaws. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Aina?
Yes, in my research into Affordable Housing Plan and in particular conversations with, uh, um, people at Canton Town of Canton, the thing that stood out to me was that, um, in respect to Affordable Housing and set aside, the FHA, there is some specific requirements for developers when they receive funding or financing through FHA for a percentage of, um, set aside for, for affordable housing. And, um, and I know you mentioned about, um, set aside, um, Affordable Housing, every, every development. So has that been featured in, um, our Bloomfield, um, Affordable Housing Plan and the regulations? The FHA financing requirements for set aside?
The FHA is one of the funding opportunities. There are a variety of funding opportunities that developers can use to
Right.
to, to, to provide affordable housing. That, quite frankly, is, um, the funding sources would not be in the, would not be in the plan. It would not be, that's, that's a developer's responsibility. Your responsibility as a commission is to, to approve the plans and to, if you so decide, um, to require that any development you approve have a certain percentage of affordable housing. It'll then be up to the developer to decide, A, whether they're willing to do that and B, how they're going to finance it.
Well, the, I, my, my understanding is that FHA financing includes specific percentage requirement for, of, set aside for affordable housing.
Yeah, that's a requirement of the FHA.
Right. Will that not be reflected? It is my understanding that that is reflected in the, um, Affordable Housing Plan for the town of Canton.
Okay.
Because there was a, quite a bit of activity, um, discussions around that within that town.
We will look at that. We, Commissioner Ola, we will look at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner James and then Commissioner Mallett?
Um, I just want to thank, um, our planning department for, um, looking for ways to incorporate some of the Affordable Housing Plan into our PLCD. I think, um, just reviewing what's currently in it. I think adding the inclusionary zoning piece will be very helpful, um, as we have our discussions. And yeah, I, I, I think we know how passionate I am about housing and I think any increased attention on having affordable housing in our communities will be very much appreciated by our neighbors. And so, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mallett?
A, a request maybe to our consultants, if, if HI, when we put the additional, um, feedback in, into a second draft, I'd be okay trying to do it electronically this time. It'd be helpful if we had maybe just a bullet point of here were the sections modified, added, removed. And, um, then I, I don't have to go page by page as much.
Highlight the change.
You want a modified red line?
Not, not totally, but close. Yeah. It, it'd be helpful and then it, I probably would get through it quicker. But even if it's just summarized, you know, sections, that's, that's fine.
That's a good point. Uh, is there any further questions or any further discussion or comments regarding the, uh, PLCD? Yes, Commissioner James?
So I, I, I would also agree with, um, Mr. Coleman that I would like to progress the PLCD and see this move forward. And, um, I think we've done a, a lot of revisions and hoping that we can all get them to our consultant and get this process moving forward.
Yeah. Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion on this, we will wait to hear back from the consultants after you provide them.
I will, I will endeavor to have a, and there's no reason I shouldn't be able to have, um, a full report for you at the meeting next Thursday.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, with that, I'll just ask Jonathan if there's any other staff reports or any other new business that you have before we adjourn?
Um, A, there is none and B, we couldn't add it to the agenda if there was.
Uh, with that said, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Kevin?
Thanks for everyone joining online. Kevin, enjoy the park.
Commissioner James, Commissioner James seconded. All righty. Good evening, guys. I'm sorry, everyone. Enjoy your vacation, Kev.
Yeah, thanks, Byron. See you guys later. Bye-bye.